You're watching Open Agenda. Here's our host, Joe White.
Thank you for joining us here at Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. This is a special episode dedicated to the public work done to bring out the lack of transparency with the MOU that was signed with the County Executive and Eastern Shore Undercover to circumvent the encrypted radio service for the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. Joining me today is our executive producer, Joe Venosa. Thank you for being here, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
So you and I have spent a lot of time, at least bearing witness, whether we're able to be there in person or watching on PAC 14, the openness of the legislative sessions, the work sessions with the county council. We've had to deal with a lot of the lack of transparency that comes with the executive's office executing these MOUs without public input, without even like preemptive public knowledge that this is even a possibility, right?
Yeah.
One of the great benefits of having an open government is the fact that citizens, and there's more than five of us, can rally around.
We're the five handsomest, to be fair.
I might not fit that.
Oh, wow.
I'm not sure if I make that cut. Maybe top four.
Okay.
But, you know, the ability of citizens to be an active participant, to make their voices heard and make some change. So today is Thursday, August 8th, and you and I were just both present at the County Executive's office where she came back and said, hey, we're going to put a pause on this MOU. But before we get there, let's unwind a little bit about exactly how we got to this point, right?
Sure, sure.
So in late July, it came out on a Friday that there was an MOU that was signed with the Eastern Shore Undercover, the proprietor of that Facebook page, that allowed that one person, at the time, the only access to the encrypted radio transmissions of the sheriff's office main dispatch channel. We weren't sure at the time just how the sheriff felt, but we were fairly certain that he wasn't involved in the process to allow that, correct?
Correct.
So in the subsequent days, there was a lot of uproar. I know that I'm talking to the county council folks of all backgrounds. This is not a political thing at all.
Nope.
There was a big uproar of, you know, is this safe? Is this right? Is this just?
Is this legal?
Is it legal? So then we did catch wind that there would be an open work session, again, not the last minute, but, you know, days in advance, you could make plans to attend, where the sheriff, Mike Lewis, was present. It was right after the regularly scheduled session on August 6th, which was this past Tuesday. The tone of Sheriff Lewis's speech, and we're going to show some of that in the next segment, was really a deep concern for the privacy of the residents of Wycomico County, or even maybe even the visitors as they come through. Just interested in some of your thoughts on that.
On the testimony itself?
Yes.
Sure. Well, let me first say that I regret I wasn't there in person. Ironically, my band was playing at National Night Out in Fruitland, so it was a tough call, but I did have an opportunity to watch it afterward. And I have to say, I thought the sheriff's presentation, his testimony, and his communication to the public was nothing short of heroic. It makes you understand and appreciate the importance of having elected officials in law enforcement like a sheriff's office in terms of what they can do to protect and inform the public. He laid out, I think as many people have seen and will see and hear more about, he laid out the numerous, numerous ethical, legal, and fundamentally sort of just the communicative issues at play with this MOU. The fact that he was joined by all of the local sheriffs.
That was impressive, wasn't it?
It was impressive, but it shows you the severity of this, frankly, this scandal and what it could represent, to have the sheriffs from Worcester, Dorchester, Somerset County, as well as our own municipality in Salisbury, and all demonstrating the common concern and cause for not only why encryption is important, but why a memorandum of understanding given out to a private citizen with such a lack of, not just transparency, but lack of safeguards, lack of forethought.
Well, there was one other aspect, too. You know, the police chief from the city of Salisbury.
Chief Mynchon, yeah.
Yeah, Chief Mynchon was there. And this inherently undermined his administration and the city government of Salisbury.
And any municipality in the county.
Delmar.
Delmar's affected Fruitland, absolutely.
Yeah, and so I wonder, because I mean, we're all, all of us in Wycomico County are citizens of this county, but some of us are citizens of our municipality, Pittsville, Willards, Hebron, Sharp Town.
Yes, sir.
When you talk about police safety that is circumvented for the personal gain of one person, in this instance, I mean, I know the MOU says that other people could do it, but there was a lot of really weird loopholes.
Yeah, I think as, I think as more information comes out, and is already out, but as will be digested by the public, I think you'll see the extent to which a lot of the concerns and suspicions.
So there was one other piece of information that came out, and Councilman Joe Holloway brought it up. And look, there's a lot of nuance in language, but at the end of the day, an event that our current executive hosted was sponsored or helped sponsored by the proprietor of Eastern Shore Undercover. There was a $3,500 donation. It's in the, it's in the legal filings of our current executive's election filings that she has to do legally.
Yes.
And then this MOU seems custom-written exactly for this.
Correct. And the sheriff laid this out.
He did.
So let's just, again, lay out in very simple terms what happened, right? Mr. Earl Campbell, the proprietor of Eastern Shore Undercover, gave to our county executive, Julie Giordano, a campaign donation for $3,500 made out to the friends of Julie Giordano, and after the fact, signs this very exclusive, very legally dubious MOU.
Yeah.
That's a fact.
Well, and then we did get some good news today. I mean, we were at the press conference. It didn't seem like it was, you know, very agreeable, but at the same time, there's a current pause on the MOU. We were both at the press conference. I was asked, I was able to ask the question of, under what circumstances could this MOU be unpause? Quite frankly, I didn't get an exact answer.
Yeah, and I think the reason is because pause is not the right word. Pause is a great human resources PR line. I think it's canceled.
Okay.
I would.
But you don't really know either.
We don't know, but I, you know, I think if you've talked to lawyers and state officials, more than likely, given the situation that we're dealing with right now in our, in our county, I would say that, that MOU, again, I could be wrong, but, you know, I think it's more likely that the Mets will win the World Series this year than we'll see.
Well, let's hope not.
Let's hope not, for both our sakes, yes, yes. Speaking of tragedies, but no.
You know, I think in the second part of our show today, we're going to show footage of the press conference, including some of the questions that the local mainstream media was able to ask, even some of the other folks who follow these community events, just like we do. In this case, this was an open and transparent form, but this also didn't go exactly to plan.
Correct.
For her.
Correct, correct. I think it reveals a lot to the public.
Okay. Well, when we come back, we're going to show some of the footage from Mike Lewis's testimony at the open work session. And after that, we're also going to show footage of today's press conference that our current executive hosted. I think when you go to watch the mainstream media, what you're going to find is a lot of reporting on the rhetoric. In today's news world, that's exactly what they do. What we're hoping for is to give you more of the substance, more of the, as if you were there to see it for yourself. Obviously, we're very concerned by it, but we want you to be able to make your own opinions and judgment. And I think the really cool thing is here, we're sitting in the PAC 14 studios, they post these press conferences, they post these work sessions unedited, and we encourage you to watch them. We'll be right back after this. Thanks for joining us again here at Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. Want to take a look at some of the footage from the work session at the county council meeting on Tuesday, August 6th. This work session was for Sheriff Mike Lewis of Wycomico County, along with the chief of Salisbury Police Department, and several counties in the local area, Somerset, Dorchester, and Worcester County. This was part of an open work session that the public could attend and watch in full. You could also watch it on PAC 14. We'd like to show you some of the footage, and when we, afterwards, we are going to show you the footage of the press conference from our county executive, Julie Giordano.
At this time, we go into open work session, and the first item on the open work session is a memorandum of understanding between the Wycomico County of Maryland and Eastern Shore Undercover LLC.
I would like to direct my initial comments to Mr. Bob Benson. Your legal interpretation, your legal analysis, and the legal summary that you just provided to the men and women of this council, and to everyone seated behind me, and those seated next to me at this table, was on point. You nailed it. And I want to thank you for all the hard work and all the research you've done to bring the council, men and women, up to, up to date on this very serious issue. Mr. President, distinguished members of our council, and the support staff who are here tonight, good evening. I'd like to start by apologize for even being here tonight. Tonight is National Night Out, a night when sheriffs across this country are out in their counties, many with their constituents, and their community members. A night where each and every one of you should be out in your county, meeting the needs of our community, but here we are. Tonight, I find myself in these council chambers, along with Sheriff Jimmy Phillips of Dorchester County, Sheriff Ronnie Howard of Somerset County, and Sheriff Matt Christopher Foley of Worcester County. Also present, seated directly behind me, is Chief Dave Mynchon of the Salisbury Police Department, and his deputy chief, Harry Drewer. On Friday afternoon, July 26th of 2024, I was on vacation with my family down in the Outer Banks of North Carolina, when an announcement came out from our own Wycomico County government, an announcement via press release from the executive's office. She announced that she had entered into an agreement, an MOU, with Eastern Shore Undercover, hereinafter referred to as ESU. She announced that an agreement had been struck between the county and ESU. This executed MOU would immediately provide ESU with a county-owned police radio, affording ESU with unprecedented and unfettered civilian access to all emergency police radio transmissions. As was said earlier, I was never consulted by my own county executive on this MOU, or any other MOU between Wycomico County and Eastern Shore Undercover. No one from my office was ever consulted on this MOU. I checked with members of my council, and to my knowledge, not one of you was consulted. Not one. There was zero collaboration between this county executive with any other fellow elected officials before entering yet again another MOU. She did it on her own. There were no checks and balances, none, period. She sought the advice of none of her own elected officials. She ignored us all and entered into an agreement with nothing more than a Facebook blogger. However, you will never read about these protests on ESU, because Earl Campbell possesses the ability to censor or simply delete those who disagree with him on anything. And he's proud of that, and he talks about that all the time on his blog. When a so-called quote "news organization" unquote gives a $3,500 donation to an elected official like this for a favor, that makes a direct threat in print against an elected sheriff, then is granted that favor, that crosses the ethical boundaries of what objectional journalism is, and certainly the questionable leadership by an elected official. I would simply ask the men and women of this council to explore any and all options to remedy this reckless and irresponsible agreement that was single-handedly orchestrated by the county executive and Mr. Eastern Shore Undercover. Since the Wycomico County, vote yes for amendment A. That's what we want.
Amen.
And it's our responsibility, not only to protect our community, but to protect the men and women who are out here protecting everyone. And this is just a blanket of security for them and for the residents of your county and for the residents of my county.
This just isn't a Wycomico County thing. Whoever's got that radio will be able to listen to Worcester, Dorchester, whoever's in those banks on that radio system, eventually Salisbury City, they'll be able to listen to everybody. And not only listen, transmit if they decide to do so.
One thing I didn't see in this MOU was any provisions for chain of custody for the county equipment, the radio. What happens when Mr. Campbell's not operating his site? What's to say that somebody doesn't have access to that radio, house guests, kids? I didn't see, did I miss something in there? I didn't see anything. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of oversight, any plan.
A lot, there's none.
I worked in Daily Times for 15 years, and the Somerset Herald. And the Daily Times, and I know the Salisbury Independent, they have an editorial staff that monitor what the reporters do, and they're called editors, because they want to make sure nothing is slanderous or liable where you can be sued. Now, this person, Mr. Campbell, is reckless. He censors things. So how is he transparent? If it's supposed to be big transparency, how is the censoring of what people criticize him about, he censors or deletes it? I also agree the victim, if you're a victim of a crime, you don't want your privacy invaded. And I also believe that having access to this channel could hurt an investigation and the safety of the officers.
I will be running for a sixth term in this county. We need stability. We need somebody who's going to stand up to this bully and hold her accountable. Since the Wycomico County, vote yes for amendment A. That's what we want.
Amen.
So that was Sheriff Mike Lewis in his own words, his own feelings about this MOU and the lack of transparency in the executive's decision to sign this. When we come back, we're going to show you footage from the press conference that the county executive had on Thursday, August 8th, in response to the work session, as well as the pausing of the MOU with Eastern Shore Undercover. We'll be right back. Thank you for joining us again for Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. We are going to take a look at the press conference hosted by our county executive, Julie Giordano, on Thursday, August 8th. This press conference was in relation to the work session that was hosted at the county council meeting on the 6th. At this press conference, she did say that she was going to pause the MOU signed with Eastern Shore Undercover. I did get a chance to ask her at one point whether, what circumstances would allow her to unpause this. I didn't get a clear answer, but let's take a look at some of the coverage from that press conference.
All right, I want to thank everyone for coming out this afternoon for this press conference. I called this press conference to clear up any misunderstandings and numerous misstatements of facts. After the press conference, I will answer any question anyone has. I want everyone to understand that I do not run my meetings the way the county council does. We will have civility. If you have a question that pertains to this topic, I would be happy to answer it for anyone. If at any point in time, you become belligerent or nasty towards me or to my staff, you will be asked to leave. So first and foremost, I want to address why I was not at the county council meeting. I want everyone to understand that these meetings are held twice a month, and they are county council meetings, not a county executive meeting. Second, on an MOU that I was a co-signer on, I was not invited to speak or clarify anything. I do find it quite concerning that an open work session was scheduled, and as a signer of the MOU was not invited to the table to discuss this, nor was the vendor, nor was the county attorney who drafted it. As I watched the council meeting on Tuesday evening, I was appalled at the behavior of some of the elected officials in this county. Calling other elected officials' names, calling them a bully, slandering them, or making false accusations is absolutely inappropriate. Emailing elected officials with threatening statements is also inept behavior. What was seen on Tuesday is a perfect example of why we need a balance of power. Hosting a witch hunt where the accused is not allowed to defend themselves, or state their side of the argument, or present evidence to debunk the accusations, is not the type of leadership that we want running this county, nor is it the type of leadership that our great country was founded on. While I very much enjoy teaching about the Salem witch trials in my 11th grade American literature class, I don't want our county government repeating that part of history. Our country was founded on constitutional principles, and what I witnessed on Tuesday was the exact opposite. While I understand that there are about 30 upset people in the council chambers, I have 103,000 citizens that I have to think about. Hundreds have expressed their appreciation for the transparency and creative thinking within, or, sorry, with working with local media. What kind of leader would I be to cater to 30 people and to pander to the camera and ignore the needs of the rest of the county? I'm going to provide everyone a quick background of how this event even, I'm sorry, how this even came into place. The idea of encryption was introduced to me, and I'll be honest, I really wasn't sold on it. But we scheduled a meeting that was held at Emergency Services that was headed up by Lorenzo Cropper, the head of Emergency Services, along with Sheriff Mike Lewis and other heads of law enforcement in the county, along with our fire departments and EMS. In the meeting, the sheriff explained the importance of encryption and how it would be beneficial to officer safety, as well as making sure that sensitive information did not go out across any sort of scanner or radio that was in the hands of civilians. In that meeting, it was decided that all of law enforcement would go to an encrypted channel, whereas fire and EMS would not go encrypted as of yet. I explained in the meeting that I would support whatever decision was made, and when we were ready to flip to full encryption, we would stand together as a united front and explain to the entire county why we decided to go in this direction. In talking with our radio division, this would not cost the county any money, as the radio division was able to program the encryption key on all of the radios. The only cost came when our radios and our corrections vans had to be programmed, and the sheriff actually covered that with his own budget. As time went on, more and more people learned about the fact that Wycomico County would eventually go to encrypted channels, and many people reached out, providing articles as to why encryption would not be a good idea. They also provided numerous articles showing that various states were not allowing full encryption without having a policy in place. We also did some research where in Baltimore City, they decided to go fully encrypted, but they use a program called Broadcastify that provides a 15-minute delay of any radio transmissions, but the public is kept informed. The only goal of the creation of the MOU was to keep our public informed and safe, and doing so in a fiscally responsible way. At no point was this done secretly. At no point was this exclusive. At no point does this affect any other county, and at no point does the MOU give the vendor access to any other channels other than main dispatch. I want to address various misstatements that were made on Tuesday night. Based on the many assertions, I can only assume that neither party involved, or that participated in the open work session actually read or fully understood the MOU. Our attorneys put in many safeguards for the county, and I will go through each misstatement and provide clarity for each one of you to form a complete picture of this entire issue rather than just one side. The first misstatement was that other counties are affected by this decision. This is false. No channels from any other county are programmed onto the radio, nor would they be affected by a vendor posting what is only going out on our main dispatch. The second misstatement, with the MOU, the vendor has access to all channels, including SWAT. This is also false. The only channels that have been added are those for main dispatch. There is absolutely no reason for any vendor to have access to those channels. Those channels inherently have sensitive information and would never be public in any way. The third misstatement, that there was no communication from my office, or that the sheriff was never consulted. This is absolutely false. As soon as the potential issue was brought to me, I, right away, I emailed not just the sheriff, but his entire command staff on June 24th. And I'm going to read to you the email that I sent him. Excuse me, one moment. Good morning. I met with Emergency Services today and was told that encryption will happen potentially on July 9th. Paul Wilber, who you all know as our attorney, was here and is concerned about the policy or lack thereof with encryption. It is suggested that the sheriff's office develop a policy as to when the information from the calls will be available to accredited, authorized media representatives, and then also to the general public. Paul looked on the sheriff's office website and saw the call log of information that is posted, but stated that it did not meet PIA requirements. After much research, Paul suggests the 15-minute delay system Broadcastify, or something similar, would be the best way to ensure transparency and avoid potential litigation. The delay system will ensure officer safety. As you will see below, many states have proposed and passed legislation not allowing full encryption without media access, and rumor has it that Maryland lawmakers are headed in that direction in 2025. Excuse me, 2025. I will defer to you, I'm going to repeat that, I will defer to you all on the policy as to what will work best for Wycomico County, as you are the experts. Thanks so much. To me, that email proves that he and his staff were consulted. We defer to them as they are the experts. To this day, which is August 8th, no one from the sheriff's office has reached out, nor have they acknowledged the email, scheduled a meeting with the attorney, or with me to alleviate some of these concerns. I also met with one of the captains within this timeframe about another topic, but did mention the encryption, to which I received no response. I also met with another member of the command staff just last Thursday, and said I was available on Friday and on Monday to discuss anything, to which I received no response. This MOU was a solution due to the concerns that were presented to me by our county attorney and the lack of response from the recipients of the email. The fourth misstatement, the attorney general was contacted. I have it on good authority with the many contacts that I have that absolutely no one, no one from Wycomico County has contacted the AG's office about any such matter of what was discussed on Tuesday night. The fifth misstatement, this was exclusive just for Eastern Shore Undercover. This is also absolutely false. On July 22nd, an email was sent to various local news outlets, and this is what that stated. Good afternoon. I know I have spoken to several agencies, but I wanted to send this email to everyone just in case. As many of you, as many of you are aware, Wycomico County Police Radio Communications have gone encrypted for various reasons, including officer safety and civilian information protection. While we understand the importance and the necessity of encryption, we also recognize the importance of transparency and adhering to PIA requirements. We wanted to reach out to the various news agencies to see if they would like to partner with us at the county level to adhere to transparency and PIA. What we are looking for in a partnership is a news agency that, number one, is a trademarked organization with proof qualified by the state and/or federal government. Number two, will designate staff to publish radio communications from main dispatch channel, the radio will be provided. Number three, all radio communications will be posted with a 30-minute delay. Number four, will publish events and press releases from the county. Number five, will not publish any sensitive information, which will be defined in the MOU agreement. Will publish at no cost to the county, was number six. We understand these stipulations are very specific and probably very difficult to adhere to, but we wanted to give everyone a chance to respond if they were interested. If you are interested, please respond to this email by Friday, July 26th, 2024. If not, please just disregard this email. We are hoping this potential partnership will signify a step forward in maintaining the delicate balance between operational security and public transparency. Wycomico County is committed to providing its residents with the information they need while safeguarding the integrity of its emergency response operations. I want to thank the various news agencies for reiterating to the public that you were asked and included in the email correspondence. The sixth misstatement, and this one probably is the worst of all, that Eastern Shore Undercover bribed me. This is probably the most horrific and degrading thing I have ever heard. During my campaign, Eastern Shore Undercover did not contribute one dime to me. Not one, not one dime. Back in February, I held an event that had various businesses sponsor the event. Eastern Shore Undercover was one of the businesses, along with many others. I feel that many of these misstatements happened due to the lack of communication and the lack of response. The silver lining out of everything that happened Tuesday evening is that we now know that there is a plan in the works, which was stated by our sheriff. And had we had had that information back in June, when the original- And had we had had that information back in June, when the original email was sent, none of all of this could have been avoided. But because now we know that there is a plan in the works, we have paused our MOU with Eastern Shore undercover, not dissolved it, but paused it. Mr. Earl Campbell has graciously returned the radio, or the county radio, to me. While his contract is completely valid, he recognizes the picture that is being painted. My office will follow up with the sheriff's office to discuss the plan and/or policy that he is, that he says is in place. In the meantime, I want to thank Ms. Mikel Dallum and Mr. Mike Goldberg for mentioning Broadcastify in the county council meeting and to my director of administration. While that option does cost a little bit more than Eastern Shore undercover, we are very open to that idea, and we look forward to working with emergency services to potentially move forward with that. So thank you both. I want to thank everyone, and I also want everyone to know that none of this was done with malicious intent. It was not done to harm, it was not done, you know, to hurt any person or agency. As I stated before, this was done to improve the safety of our law enforcement officers, to improve the safety of our citizens, to keep our citizens more informed, and done in a fiscally responsible way. I think the biggest lesson learned here is that communication is key, and when problems or concerns are brought to us, ignoring them is really not the best way to handle it. As I stated in the email to all of the local news outlets, Waukesha County is committed to providing its residents with the information they need while safeguarding the integrity of its emergency response operations. Thank you for your time, and at this time, I will take any questions that anyone has.
Under what conditions would you unpause the MOU that is currently paused with Eastern Shore undercover?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You stated earlier.
Oh, to unpause it.
Unpause it.
Yeah. Well, actually, I think what it would take is if there's no action whatsoever. So to be told that there's a plan and a policy in place, and if we found out that there wasn't a plan or policy in place, we would probably look at something else. But, but like I said, with residents and people mentioning that they think Broadcastify would be a good idea, I mean, I'm actually for that. We were trying to figure out the cost, and what happened was is that Broadcastify, the quote that we ended up getting, and this is through emergency services, was $150,000. And the reason was is because we needed four separate towers because of having four separate agencies. And that's not the cost every single year, that's a one-time thing, and then you end up paying a fee, you know, whatever that would, that would be. So in all honesty, if we were able to move to something similar to Broadcastify or something like that, there would be no need to even start the MOU back up.
Do you, do you have a, do you have a plan for if you decided to start the MOU back up, how you would let the public know that that was happening?
Um, I haven't even really thought about it right now. It literally just got paused today. So, I mean, it would be a little bit, because like I said, you know, if the sheriff is working on a plan, we want to let that plan kind of come to fruition first before we, and then have it reevaluated. Just what was put out right now of what, and I haven't looked at this new plan or policy that he has, what was being put out before was told to us by the attorney did not meet PIA requirements. So that was our biggest thing, is making sure that we were adhering to that. So it would be hard for me to say, but, but like I said, if we were to go to something else, then there would be no need to do that. Yes, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Ms. Giordano. In any of the email correspondence that you sent to Sheriff Lewis, did you advise him that an MOU was being considered that would allow civilian access to police, encrypted police communications? And in any of those emails, did you request a future meeting or a response from the sheriff when you sent those emails?
So when I sent the original email talking about, you know, the concerns that we had, receiving no, nothing, you know, back from him, and then having the communication with the two officers, no, we did not specifically talk about that. No, we did not.
So he was unaware of the MOU?
He was, well, no, I think he kind of knew about it, and especially after we had said, let's have a talk on Friday or Monday prior to the council meeting, and he chose to come to the council meeting instead.
But there was nothing in the email?
Not in an email, no.
Or a follow-up conversation?
No, no, the follow-up conversation will happen after this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Yes, Joe.
Pardon me for just one second. So is there any part of the original MOU with Eastern Shore undercover that is still in effect? Because there was some other aspects as far as county events and county news, press releases. Is any of that still in effect, or has all of it been paused?
So the entire MOU has been paused, but actually prior to this MOU, when we would send out any press releases or things like that, Eastern Shore undercover is on our press release site, or our press release list, sorry. And so he'll continue to get them, but it will be up to him whether he posts them or not.
So one follow-up question to that.
Sure.
It's been reported by Mr. Campbell himself that there's several folks who he has chosen to block for various reasons. So one of the, one of the key aspects of communication with you and your office has been your, your show, Executive Exclusive, and it is aired on his site. In the air of transparency, would you be willing to air that show just in its normal form on your official government site for, for your office?
My executive exclusive?
Yes.
So it's on YouTube on PAC 14 as well, so the whole public has access to it. So I probably, I probably wouldn't, I mean, I guess I could post it, but with it being on PAC 14, and I mean, we would just go it through there. So he chooses to.
Would you consider to do it?
Putting.
On, on your official site?
Executive exclusive? Yeah, of course I would consider it, I guess.
Okay. What would make you not want to have it on your official site?
I just never even really thought about it. You mean my official Facebook page?
Yeah, that way, because you, I mean, you're, you're the elected official, you, you know, you, you've, you've represented us as citizens here. In this, in that aspect, for full transparency, in the, in the way that you have chosen to, to, to get out information, I mean, I watch your show, you have a lot of information on there. That way, the whole public has access to it in a similar fashion that you talked about having, you know, information as far as, you know, police communications. If it was on your site, then, then no one else would have control over who could or could not see it. Is that right? Would you, would you do that?
I mean, yes, I mean, I would definitely consider it, but like I said, it's already publicly accessible, so it's not like the only place it's posted is Eastern Shore undercover. It's on PAC 14's YouTube site, so just as your show is.
Okay. The initial announcement was made on a Friday, and pardon me for getting the date, but late July. I, I contacted my, my elected councilman in my district, and I asked him for some additional information. He, he explained to me that he emailed your office and was told that citizens who want the MOU need to file a PIA request. The hard thing with that is there's a 10 to 30-day delay. So is that as transparent as it could be if, as a citizen, prior to this MOU being enacted, granted it's paused now, it, prior to it being enacted, there wasn't any pre, you know, pre-notification that then once there is a question that I'm forced as a private citizen to request a PIA, this 10 to 30 days? And, and I, I take this not just for the MOU that was signed with Mr. Campbell, but also the MOU that was signed with Brad Hoffman for the Safari at the Quarry. Is it, is it transparent as possible that we find out these things after they happen, but then have to wait up to 30 days for additional information?
Sure. So we're kind of saying the same thing, that PIA is PIA, but you, this 10 to 30 days. So it's better to get the information out quicker, right? So we're kind of in agreeance with that. As far as the MOU, that email, I remember that email, I sent the MOU right to Ms. Hurley, who had said that some members of the public were asking for it. And I had said, that's fine, here's the, you know, here it is, let's just, you know, from now on, probably should go through the PIA. And I think it was brought up by Mr. Holloway if Mr. Campbell had to follow through, and he has followed through with every PIA. I do want to say, though, that I do feel like my office, unless it's something huge and there's like a ton of information, we do a pretty good job at getting the information out as quickly as we can. Right now, AK, who typically does our PIA's, her husband had a really bad fall, and so she's out for a little bit, so, you know, give us some grace here on that. But for the most part, we adhere to that as quickly as possible. So, you know, I'm, from what I've understood, though, for what you've asked for, you, you got it relatively quickly.
I did in this case, and, and I can appreciate that in the future I would do that. I think the one difference is if it's a, if it's a county council matter, there's going to be a 15-day window where there's transparent information sent out, that there will be a hearing, and there'll be a discussion or a work session. In, in the case, whether it be the Safari at the Quarry or the, the now-paused MOU with Eastern Shore undercover, there was not that transparent ahead of time, hey, look, this is maybe coming down the pipe.
Right.
So I think those are apples and oranges, maybe, with PIA. I understand what you're saying, and I, I appreciate you getting it to us so, so quickly. But the one main difference is for the legislative body to do anything, there has to be a preemptive notification that, hey, come here at this time, because there's several folks in the community, not just our growing numbers, but several of us who, who wish to be able to, to be informed and, and to have a voice.
Right. Well, and I, and I feel like we're saying the same thing just about different matters. Like, so you want to be informed as quickly as possible, so do a lot of our residents. So it's kind of the same theme as what we're working with here. My point is, though, is that we have a process in place for a reason, and so if there is a topic that's brought up at the county council meeting, I don't think it's wise for citizens to just reach out to their county councilmen and then go over to my office. So there is a process to go through with that, and so if, if we did it that way, then there would be no need for the PIA. People could just go through their councilperson, who then goes to the council administrator, who then goes to me or my office, and then it, and then it goes back. So there is a process where you can skip all of that, and it literally goes right to my office, and we can put it right back out.
There is a difference between understanding when an accident might happen that you can't plan for and a MOU that has had, have some time for negotiation. So I understand how you're trying to make the correlation, and I don't fully disagree with you, but they're not actually the same. There are times, if I was going to get married, that would be something I planned, I would put that out there. If I was going to slip and fall and break my neck, I probably wouldn't inform everybody that it was coming. Those are actually two different things. I'm standing here with Council Vice President Jeff Merritt. Thank you for joining me here at Open Agenda.
Hey, Jeff.
So we just left the press conference from the county executive, Julie Giordano, regarding the pausing of the MOU with Eastern Shore undercover. Do you have any comments about what you just saw in the press conference?
Well, I'm glad the MOU's paused, it never should have been written in the first place. You know, we keep hearing about transparency and, and all that. The information that we're all talking about is actually already out there. Every fire department, sheriff's office, police department, they have their websites, they have their Facebook pages, they're on multiple social media platforms. Sheriff's Office even has an app that you can put on your phone, I've had it on my phone for five years.
And the information comes out the next day, correct?
Correct, yeah. Your calls for service, you can file a complaint, there's information about sex offenders in your neighborhood, it's, it's a very useful app with a lot of features to it.
He even spoke about that at the work session on Tuesday night with Sex Offender Registry, you know, with pictures.
Yes.
So the, the intent of that app is to keep the community as informed as, as possible.
Yes, correct.
So what do you hope that the next steps are as far as the, the steps that the executive's office would take and the sheriff's office would take?
I hope the encryption process continues. I'd like to see it include the fire departments, because the fire and EMS personnel are under the same challenges that the law enforcement's under.
So that was some of the coverage from the county executive's press conference on Thursday, August 8th. What we want to encourage you to do is take a look at this for yourself. The next county council meeting is on Tuesday, August 20th, and at 10:00 AM in the morning at the Government Building. The best way to get more information is to come yourself if you can. PAC 14 does a great job of hosting these events live, unedited, and you can also catch it on their YouTube page later. We're going to keep coming back each week to give you our information, the, the bullet points, but we encourage you to go out and find your own information. Thanks for joining us today for Open Agenda. We'll see you next week. We think Mark Carroll is the best editor ever.